I take it that's it, Joe?
You did?
Yeah.
At N U S C?
Yeah.
What time?
Wednesday.
I'll go with you. I won't go in with the doctor, but I'll go up with you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're now live streaming.
Thank you. I'm John Gregg, Mayor of the town of Sixon. Convened for the February meeting. There are people on the Zoom that need to mute their devices so that all who are on the Zoom can be heard. Thank you. I will now call the meeting to order and I will ask that the town clerk confirm that notice of this meeting has been appropriately posted and that the other requirements of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act have been satisfied.
It has.
Thank you for that. We'll be following the agenda. I have had no request to go out of order on the agenda. And the first item of business on our agenda is approval of minutes. And first of those are the meeting minutes from the town council meeting of January 26, 2021. A copy of those minutes have been provided to members of council. And I call for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning those minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask that all members of council indicate their approval of those minutes by signifying aye.
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 Aye. The minutes of the town council meeting of January 26, 2021 are approved as presented. The second set of minutes are the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee meeting from the February 9, 2021 meeting. Again, a copy of those minutes have been included in the members' packets. And I'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions, or discussion concerning the minutes of the Ways and Means Committee meeting of February 9, 2021? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Those minutes, I believe, are approved unanimously. The next step on our agenda, we have the financials for the month of January. I'll provide the summary of the financials. Total fund balance for the period ending January 31, 2021 was $5,627,633, about $467,345 more than the balance as of January 31, 2020. And about $697,489 more than for 2019. Unrestricted revenue for January and for the year totaled $34,375, representing about 2.6% of the 2021 annual budget and about $36,604 less than for January of 2020. Expenditures for January and for the year totaled $56,527, representing about 4% of the 2021 annual budget. Expenditures for the year were about $4,362 more compared to the same period of 2020. Excess of expenditures over revenues was $22,151 for the month of January and for the year, compared to about $3,014 as of January 31, 2020. Members are reminded that the license renewal date has been extended to March 31, 2021. And the later date can be expected to reduce revenue during the first quarter this year as compared to prior years. Are there any questions concerning the financials? Hearing none. Yes? Skip, do you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. I will move on. Next item on our agenda is for citizens' comments. And I inquire as to whether we have received citizen comments in advance of the meeting. Joe, any citizen comments?
We did receive one comment, but it's not pertaining to an item on the agenda. So I can cover that when we get to the citizens' comments at the end of the agenda.
All right. I will also confirm that we have all, all members of council and the mayor, as well as the town administrator, received a citizen's comment that relates to the town's regulation of short-term rentals. I have responded to that comment. Essentially, the comment expressed dissatisfaction with the process that the town followed in approving its ordinance for regulation of short-term rentals, as well as displeasure with the short-term rental permit fee. Beyond that, I have, my response was provided to members of council. I did have a follow-up comment from that citizen to the effect that she expressed her hope that the short-term permit fee could be reduced in the future. But again, reiterated her displeasure with the town's regulation of short-term rentals. Beyond that, I have no other comments regarding citizen comments. With that, we'll move on in the agenda. And next, we have reports of the standing committees, commissions, and boards. And I'll call on Councilman Crane to give his report, or the Public Safety Committee.
Before we go on, John, on that last item.
Yes?
As I looked at it, it seemed to be as much of a question about the implementation or the failure of implementing properly the short-term rental. Did I misread that?
Well, I took it as essentially displeasure with the lack of direct notice to this citizen. And of course, in my response, I pointed out the various notices that were provided in the, in council's undertaking of consideration of regulation of short-term rentals, and then consideration of a proposed ordinance, and consideration of revisions of the ordinance before we've, including, we had a public hearing. And then we had a special council meeting that included a second public hearing, which is, I would say, somewhat out of the ordinary. But in all instances, as council considered the ordinance, there were notices to the public of what council was doing in connection with its regularly and, in the case of the special meeting, it's, I'll say, special meeting that were, that related to that ordinance. So I believe that any question or displeasure concerning ordinance, I believe, has been replied to by my response.
I agree. And I just think the comments are appropriate for, for here as well. So thanks for going through that.
All right. Good enough. All right, Skip, go ahead with public safety.
Public safety, let's see. Public Safety Committee last met Monday, February 8, 2021, and confirmed that all requirements of the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act have been met. Committee approved the minutes from the January 11 meeting. And those minutes have been sent to the town clerk for public posting. The committee reviewed the Disaster Recovery Council exercise after-action report, provided by Scott Cave, our consultant for emergency planning. The exercise was conducted on the 27th of January. Overall, the Public Safety Committee was pleased with the exercise. There was discussion for a few items that should be noted for similar exercises in the future. Did we take the pandemic restrictions into sufficient consideration? The exercise was conducted using virtual meeting technology. Even so, participants were establishing the MEOC, for example. That's the Municipal Emergency Operations Center. In a physical space as opposed to a virtual space. In the end, we had to accept that the pandemic would eventually end and normal operations would prevail. We missed the participation by Marina operations and merchant representatives. The property is pending sale, so that situation should be resolved in the near future. Did we give sufficient attention to food distribution and temporary housing? In an earthquake scenario, there will likely be off-island people trapped here until the roads are passable. This could include, but not be limited to, staff for the town, POA, club, and Camp St. Christopher, in addition to contractors and other day workers. The matter will be taken up at the DRC meeting in March. The after-action report lists 11 specific actions in the exercise improvement plan. And the committee assigned initial responsibility for each. The chair distributed the plan to the DRC members on February 10, requesting any necessary clarification on any items and setting a target date for items that have been assigned to specific members. The DRC will meet on March 4 to review the report in more detail and discuss those action plans and the associated assignments. So if something doesn't seem quite right, that will be the time when we can address that. There was a comment posted to the town website about dogs being walked along the bike path that were off-leash. We discussed this situation at town council last month. And the mayor referred the incident to Public Safety Committee to investigate and provide any recommendations. After discussion, the committee members recommended unanimously that the town adapt a town-wide leash law based on the regulation already in place for SPOA. The town administrator is currently researching what neighboring cities have on their books. And he'll be preparing draft language for review by the Public Safety Committee at the March meeting, with the intent of bringing it forward to council later that month, the March meeting. The town administrator reviewed the status of the beach patrol requests for bids that were issued last month. I expect he will address that in more detail as part of his report later on in the agenda. And the next meeting will be March 8, 2021. And that concludes the report for public safety.
All right, Skip. So your, your Public Safety Committee meeting is March 8. And the DRC meeting to review the after-action report is March 4. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, thank you. Any other questions for Skip? Hearing none. Pat, communications?
Yes. We had a radio net test on February 21 at 8:00 p.m. There were 10 ham radio operators, and it was very successful. And then, going to Tidelines, I just wanted to go through a few things that we've published this month and our success. I'd like to let everybody know that Tidelines has 2,163 followers, who receive a daily message. So this is really a push method of communications, which in some ways can be more effective than just putting things on our website, which is sort of a poll, meaning that the user has to go and find the information rather than the information being delivered to them. So that being said, we published, yesterday, we published the agenda for the town council meeting. And hopefully, people are watching. I've instituted the TOSI clips and our February 9 Ways and Means meeting. I have 18 different links on it, and we had 323 views on YouTube. The average for the last eight months before we began the TOSI clips, there were 34 views. So that means we've had an 89% increase on people viewing the YouTube video. And it can be different segments, the ones that they're interested in. We also had two posts concerning the dolphin education program. Councilman Finkie had asked us to do this, and we had a 2020 seasonal review and also a, an invitation for people to join the dolphin education program. In addition to this, I've been working with Joe to update the town's dolphin education program webpage, hope to have that information to him in two weeks in a consolidated style so he can bring it all together. And that's about it for what's happening in communications.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fox. Again, I will add my expression of appreciation for the work that you did to bring forward the, I'll call it topicalized, posting to Tidelines for the, the town meetings. I think that's been very effective. Any other questions for Pat?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Pat, I haven't checked today, so I don't know if it's up on the website yet. But I think if it's possible, could we put something out on Tidelines about the community promotion grants?
I was gonna, I was gonna close with asking anybody if they had anything, just let me know. So absolutely. Do you have, can you send me a little something and I'll make sure we get it out there?
Um, yeah. I'll just write a little something up. I had, I put a paragraph about it in the Seabrooker that's coming out. But the deadline for the first round of grants is April 1. So I thought it would be timely to get it out there now for people to start thinking if they needed to request seed money from that.
That, that would be perfect. And, and if you just shoot me that little paragraph you wrote, that'll be fine. And I'll make sure it gets out there.
Okay, Joe, is it up on the website yet? I didn't check the last couple days.
I was working on it this morning. It'll be on either before I leave today or tomorrow morning. I'm just trying to get the form into a editable PDF version that I can post on the website. So should be probably just another hour or so of time to get that up and going.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'll hold off on scheduling it until we know it's up and live on the website.
Okay.
Any other questions for Pat at this point? Hearing none. I think we're up to Beach Administration. Oh, I'm sorry, we're up to Special Projects. Barry?
Yeah. Joe and I had a meeting with ESP last week regarding the two items that they have, which is the bike path and the roadway. We went through what we expected, and they went on their way. They have committed to giving us the roadway report by the end of this month. The bike report, they committed to this week. They sent us a draft of it. I'm not going to submit the draft to the town council until Joe and I go through it and get back to ESP to make sure that it's what we expect. So shortly, hopefully, we'll get a copy of the pathway report out to everybody for their review.
I'm sorry, Barry. Did you say what the date was for the Seabrook Island Road Report?
By the end of this month, hopefully by the.
End of February?
End of February.
All right. Any, any further, anything further, Barry?
That is it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Barry? Hearing none. Beach Administration and Community and Government Relations. I'll call on Councilwoman Finkie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing on the agenda. Everybody should have got a copy via email from Fay with the endorsement statement for the Sea Island birders and their shorebird steward program. And essentially, this is the same statement that we adopted in January 2020. There's a, shifted around the first couple paragraphs a little bit. The third paragraph where they agreed to abide by all the town ordinances for the beach signage, work with Joe, and keep it very passive. They don't approach people on the beach. They ask people to come up and ask about the birds. We added the paragraph about COVID safety protocols. As I, as I said a couple weeks ago at our Ways and Means meeting, this is a very serious, passionate group of people that form Sea Island birders. And they put a lot of time and research into their proposals and what they're going to do on the beach. And so we added that paragraph about the safety protocols they've established to make sure that everything is safe and, and small groups, and people aren't sharing binoculars and equipment. And also, as last year, although we have, over the last couple, three years, we have, council has approved funding for their brochures, which has our dog, the town's dog, Beach Rules, on it. In the endorsement, we don't provide any funding or obligate any funding. But they are an organization that we really had in mind after they'd come for funding for the brochures that are the perfect type of organization to, to apply for our community promotion grants. So we mentioned that in the endorsement. I'll just say that the organization came to council a year ago to have this program on the beach. They're sponsored by South Carolina DNR, Fish and Wildlife Service, and South Carolina Audubon. They're working with those organizations. Possibly, they'll get some funding through there, but then they will apply for the grants if they don't. And essentially, that's it. They came to us. They wanted to be sure that their, their work on the beach with that steward program had the town's approval. And nobody could walk up to them and say, you know, what the hell are you doing here on our beach? So they approached us about this endorsement, and I think it's a great program. The organization is, again, I'm so impressed with the work they do, not just on the beach, but their educational programs throughout the year for stewardship of and conservation of all birds that live on Seabrook or visit Seabrook Island. So with that, I'd like to, unless anybody has a question, I'd like to make a motion that council approved this endorsement statement.
Is there a second?
A second.
The only comment I have is, in the, in the endorsement, the paragraph where you refer to the community promotions program funding, I would prefer that you delete the "and is encouraged," or however that's phrased. They are eligible. I think the, the problem I have with saying in the endorsement that they're encouraged to apply for that funding is that it suggests that the town, or the committee, I should say, is predisposed to approving that request.
I'm happy to change that, Mr. Mayor. I don't read it that way. I, I'm, you know, I would encourage any organization out there to apply for a grant that's eligible. But if that makes you more comfortable, I don't have any problem deleting that verbiage.
It would make me more comfortable. And yes, I, I can see that, that there's room for doubt about whether it would be read as I have suggested. But I also think that we don't have the opportunity to express encouragement for other organizations. This endorsement is an endorsement, I believe, to give legitimacy to their presence on the beach, not to flag to the general community that they, they should be getting money from our program.
So I will amend my motion then that council adopt the endorsement statement with the "and encouraged" cross.
Thank you for that. Is there a second for that amendment?
I can.
A second.
Very well. All in favor of the, of approval of the endorsement as amended, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 With that, the endorsement as amended is approved.
And that's all I have.
Anything further, Jerry?
Oh, that was it.
All right, very well, thank you. Next up, I believe we have the report for the Ways and Means Committee meeting for February. I'll give that report. First item, follow-up on Charleston County zoning regulation revisions. I reported at the February 8 meeting, I reported that at the February 8 meeting of the Charleston County Planning Commission, zoning and planning staff described an alternative to revisions of R4 zoning that had been previously proposed. The alternative would leave R4 zoning as-is and reduce required minimum lot size to facilitate achievement of target density, particularly in large parcels. It was noted by the staff director that the previously proposed increases in density within the urban growth boundary, which includes the sea islands, would have the undesired consequence of increasing traffic in rural areas of Johns Island. Concerning the putt-putt development, I reported that a representative of Charleston County Planning Commission stated that the February 3 Johns Island Task Force meeting, the submission had been received from the developer seeking rezoning of the parcel at 4455 Betsy Carrison. New rezoning request is on the agenda for the County Planning Commission meeting of March 8 and is characterized as seeking rezoning from R4 to PD 178. That's a planned unit development. Members have been provided, I believe, both the most recent request for rezoning, as well as minutes of the Planning Commission meeting from October of 2019, when they considered the earlier request for rezoning. Next up, the Red Cross Month proclamation. I announced at the Ways and Means meeting that in response to a request from a representative of Red Cross, a proclamation has been prepared to make March Red Cross Month in the town. Members were provided the proposed proclamation, and their comments were solicited in contemplation of approval of the proclamation at today's meeting. I also commented about upcoming appointment to Community Promotions Program Committee. And in that regard, Councilwomen Finkie and Fox had agreed to serve as members of the committee responsible for reviewing and approving grant funding by the town under the Community Promotions Program, which was approved at the January council meeting. I indicated that I would offer nominations for appointment to the committee meeting at today's meeting. Town council members' reports included Board of Councilmen Crane for the Public Safety Committee and the report of the DSO Advisory Committee update progress. Councilwoman Finkie announced at the Ways and Means meeting that she was working on an endorsement. Councilwoman Finkie announced at the Ways and Means meeting that she was working on an endorsement for the Seabrook Island Shorebird Steward Program, which of course, we've just heard about. She also commented regarding the report received from the Low Country Marine Mammal Network regarding the dolphin education program on Seabrook Island. That's a report for their activity for 2020. Councilwoman Finkie made specific reference to denial of Low Country Marine Mammal Network's request for establishment of a no-wake zone in Captain Sam's Inlet and recommended actions of the town, including establishment of permanent education, posting of permanent signage, increase of information being provided to guests, property owners, and visitors, and communication concerning federal regulations as well as the town's ordinances regarding dolphins. The town administrator commented that he had received complaints concerning damage from boat wakes and had received no response to his form of those complaints to the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources in June of 2020. I believe there is interest in further pursuing establishment of a no-wake zone, but there's been some correspondence in that regard. Councilwoman Fox summarized publications on behalf of the town in the Seabrooker on tide lines in January and February. Councilman Goldstein commented at the time at the Ways and Means meeting that he was still awaiting reports for the Seabrook Island Road and Town pedestrian bicycle path from the engineering consultant, which of course, we now have in hand. From the Ways and Means meeting, the town administrator had action items, including two members, two members that, he informed members that there were two requests for temporary use permits that would be on the agenda for the February meeting, February council meeting. Ones for the Dolphin Slam Tournament, the others for the Bo Hicket Invitational Billfish Tournament. That under the emergency ordinance, in effect, all requests for temporary use permits are required to be referred to council rather than to the Planning Commission, and those requests are on the agenda for today's meeting. He had items for discussion, including business licensing. He reported that business license application forms had been completed and were available at town hall and on the town's website. He also reported that the short-term rental permit application form had been completed and posted to the town's website. And he reminded members that all business license renewal applications are due as of March 31st. Another item for discussion was the Beach Patrol Request for Proposals. He reminded members that February 12th, 2021 was the due date for proposal responsive to the town's requests for proposals for Beach Patrol services. Since then, we have received one proposal, and we had an inquiry by Councilwoman Finkie in respect of the revisions to the town's business license ordinance necessitated by state legislation reforming municipal business license practices that had been passed in 2020. Town administrator indicated that a process of several months was contemplated, and Councilwoman Finkie volunteered to assist with the updating process. And with that, I agree, I have reached the end of my report for the Ways and Means meeting. So far as I know, we have no report from the Planning Commission. If there is anyone on this Zoom for the Planning Commission, please speak up. Otherwise, we'll go on. I believe we have no one on the Zoom for the Board of Zoning Appeals, which brings us to the reports of ad hoc committees. And for that, I'll call on Councilman Crane to give the report for the Development Standards Ordinance Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The DSO Advisory Group, at January 28th, to review the second draft of the new DSO. Paula Block, the consultant we have engaged for this project, provided a single-page item listing the major talking points he put together from the group's review of the initial draft. The group went through the list and made any necessary changes for the next draft. Paul has that now, and I expect he'll be distributing that shortly. Just thought I'd try and give people an appreciation for what that item means, and this is kind of a visual. If you'll take a look, this is what we've been working with. This was the initial draft that came out, or that's now that represents the second draft. So it's quite a bit, double-sided. And we reduced it to the one page of the discussion items that needed to be covered. So everything else was pretty much agreed to and approved by, at least by our group. So it was quite a bit of work over the last year and a half or so. And I just, again, want to express my appreciation to those who have been part of this group for that period of time. We did discuss the next steps, which include review of the final draft by the group and then conducting a public review and comment procedure. Under normal circumstances, a public review would be conducted at town hall, where either the public is invited to come in and review any exhibits we might have had, like we did with the town's comprehensive plan, or to a meeting that would be scheduled where the public could engage in Q and A, public comment period. In this age of COVID, either approach will not be all that easy. So we will continue to review and discuss alternative methods. The group adjourned without setting a meeting date for the follow-up, which is not unusual. And Paul will make that arrangement, and we will communicate that when we get that. And that concludes the report for the DSO Advisory Group.
Thank you, Skip. Did you indicate when you expect the next draft to be issued by our consultant?
I believe he is targeting the middle of next month, the middle of March. So I'd say in the next two, I'd say the next two to three weeks.
All right, thank you for that. Any other questions for Councilman Crane considering the DSO review and the DSO Advisory Group? Hearing none. We are now ready for reports of town officers, and I will give my report first. Concerning the Red Cross Month proclamation, members have been provided a draft proclamation making March Red Cross Month in Seabrook Island. I have received no proposed revisions to the draft. We do have a more final form that was, I'm not sure, Fay, whether that, did we get that distributed to all members today? Fay?
I believe they should have, and I gave everybody the one that Joe had.
All right, so there were no.
I forwarded it on an email.
But in the final form, the town's logo is at the top of the page, if you have that. You'll see it with everything save the town seal affixed and my signature. So with that, I will move for approval of the proclamation as presented, subject only to the fixation of the town seal and signature in the final form. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion regarding the proclamation to make March Red Cross Month in the town of Seabrook Island? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the proclamation as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 The proclamation is approved. Next up, our nominations for appointment to the Community Promotions Program Committee. With the approval of the Community Promotions Program at the January council meeting, and with agreement of Councilwomen Finkie and Fox to serve on the program committee, I now nominate residents Michael Bryan and Sarah Carter, residents to serve on the Community Promotions Program Committee. Members have been provided copies of the volunteer submissions of Michael Bryan and Sarah Carter. I call for a motion for approval of the appointment of Michael Bryan and Sarah Carter to the Community Promotions Program Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that it's Sharon Carter, not Sarah Carter.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon Carter, yes, my typo. Thank you for that.
And with that, so moved, or seconded, whatever you need.
Second. And any questions, comments, or discussion concerning the nominations of Michael Bryan and Sharon Carter to serve on the committee? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the appointment of Michael Bryan and Sharon Carter to serve on the Community Promotions Program Committee, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 Their appointment to the committee is approved. My next item is update concerning the rezoning request for 4455 Betsy Carrison Parkway. Members have been provided a copy of the agenda for the County Planning Commission meeting of March 8th, 2021, at which a request for rezoning of the parcel at 4455 Betsy Carrison Parkway is to be considered. Members have also been provided a copy of extracts of the County Planning Commission meeting of October 4th, 2019, at which a prior request for the same rezoning of that parcel was considered. Members are reminded that this proposal, proposed rezoning is made in contemplation of inclusion of a miniature golf that's a putt-putt operation. Once the new rezoning request is available, I will seek to have a posting on tide lines concerning the request and the opportunity for public comment in advance of the March 8th County Commission meeting. The last I looked at the county website, the most recently submitted request was not available for download from the website, and I do not have another channel to have a copy of that request. So I'm kind of at the mercy of the county website to have that request available for dissemination within the community. But as I say, it is my intention, once that request is available, to post information through tide lines concerning the request and the opportunity to make public comments. My last topic is the County Rural Vaccination Program. It was announced during the Charleston County Emergency Management Department Tri-County Conference Call that the county and Feather Healthcare Network have partnered to conduct COVID-19 vaccination events to better serve the rural areas of Charleston County. The first event was held February 16th at the Public Library in Hollywood, and the next event is scheduled for February 26th at the Public Library on James Island. Members have been provided flyers for these events. In response to an inquiry during the conference call, it was confirmed that it is contemplated that an event will be scheduled to serve the residents of Johns Island. Again, the last time I looked, notice of these events is contained in press releases at the county website, and there was no notice of an event for Johns Island the last time I looked. So all I can say is, if you're interested to see notices of events that would pertain to Johns Island, have a look at news releases on the Charleston County website. And with that, I have concluded my report, and I will now call on the town administrator to give his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple quick items for update. First is, we have officially now launched our Bobcat Guardian Program. That was one that we had talked about over the last several months. When we sent out the business license renewal forms to the pest control companies operating within the town, we did include a letter from the mayor requesting their consideration to participate in that program, as well as an application form to take what we called the "Save Our Bobcats" pledge. Those have been distributed, and to date, we've received several, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven companies have submitted their Bobcat pledge form, A-Advance Pest Control, Anchor Pest Management, Atlantic Pest and Termite Management, Clark's Termite and Pest Control, Ledford's Termite and Pest Control, Lightning Termite and Pest Control, and Terminex Services. So we would encourage individuals, if they're having any pest control treatment undertaken, particularly if it involves treating for rodents, we would encourage residents, property owners, business owners to consider doing business with those companies who've agreed to cease use of the second-generation anticoagulants. Any business that would like to take the pledge, they can submit that to us. Once we receive it, we'll review it, and as long as it's acceptable, we will also list the information for that business on our website as well. But did just want to provide a follow-up to let you know that that has been formally launched. The information is available on our website under the Services tab. If you go down to Wildlife, it'll pop out the Bobcat Guardian Program. That's where that information can be found. We also linked to several articles and pieces of information in a video. A lot of it coming from the town of Kiowa Island, from their staff biologist, Jim Jordan. We also had some additional information from Clemson University, SC DNR, and the Environmental Protection Agency linked to that page as well. So we would encourage everyone to take a look at that, and if possible, consider using one of the Bobcat Guardian Program providers when selecting your pest control company. Any questions?
I just want to mention, members have been provided a copy of correspondence received from the South Carolina Pest Control Association, acknowledging the town's undertakings for reducing or eliminating use of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides within the town by pest control providers. We welcome the SCPCA's expression of support and cooperation in this effort.
Thank you. And I think we'd also be remiss not to thank Jim Jordan over at the town of Kiowa and the town of Kiowa Island itself for kind of bringing this issue to the forefront and taking the lead on it. I think it's good that we're stepping forward and joining them in that effort. And of course, as we said in the past, our bobcats kind of share the same range of Seabrook and Kiowa Islands. So anything that both communities can do to help protect those populations, I think, will be in both of our best interests. Next item on the agenda, just for an update on the implementation of ordinance 2020-14. That's the short-term rental ordinance. All of the mallers have gone out to the short-term rental companies. It included a packet with the business license renewal and a renewal letter, as well as the short-term rental permit application with a corresponding letter for that as well. They have started coming in. To date, we have processed and approved 15 short-term rental permit applications. We know as the mallers start getting into folks' hands, we'll start seeing more of those. We did send them also by email to some of the management companies, and we know that they've been undertaking efforts to get those completed and get them in as soon as. as soon as, as soon as they're able to. So, over the next probably five weeks or so, we do expect most, if not all, of those will come in, and we'll get those turned around and processed. We have gotten a couple requests for clarification or more information. One of them is, we're advising everyone, we did put on the website, to please submit the short-term rental permit application with your business license renewal. If we do not have both, if we get one and not the other, it will be returned. So, please make sure that's being submitted. Both of those documents are being submitted together along with the payment for both of them. We have had a couple issues where particularly it's a management company that's submitting it on behalf of the owner, which is fine. We just are requesting that either the owner sign the application, just so that we have documentation, that there's designation of that company as the agent to operate on their behalf, or absent that, if they will also, if the agent will submit a copy of the management contract with the owner's signature, again, just designating them to operate that unit on their behalf. So, if we don't have anything, if it comes in from an agent, and we don't have anything with an owner's signature saying that, you know, this individual or this company is authorized to pull this permit on our behalf, we'll send that back as well. So, lastly, we have gotten a few questions about the placards that are required to be posted inside the primary access to the unit. When we're issuing the short-term rental permit, we're actually producing just a one-page, a regular standard-page PDF document that we're making available to the applicant upon approval. That's basically intended to be a code-compliant permit placard, so they can print that, they can laminate it, whatever they want to do, and basically just stick that information right inside of the door. And it'll include everything that's required, so the property address, the permit number, the business license number, the maximum occupancy fire hydrant, or the fire extinguisher location, and the twenty-four-hour emergency contact. So, the only thing that the applicant will have to stick in there will be the location of the fire extinguisher, and they will have basically a fully ready-to-implement code-compliant placard for posting. The other one is, we've had folks asking about the information packets. Under the ordinance, the information packets, we have until on or before April thirtieth to get that information out. Right in the application form we put in there, there's a bunch of checkboxes as folks are filling those out. We're asking by May first, will they have a copy of the information packet available to distribute to short-term rental guests, either upon check-in or prior to check-in in paper or electronic format? Even though the rest of the ordinance is in effect, because that information won't be distributed until prior to that date, we're only asking that they're agreeing to provide that information starting May first. So, if they don't have it prior to then, that's, that's fine. They're not going to get docked or no issues or penalties or anything for that. But we know that, you know, going forward in future years, we would expect them to keep the prior year's information until the new year's information comes out. With this being the first year, there is no prior year's information. So, we'll, we're working on that now. We'll try to get that distributed as soon as we can. But we will not be, that will not be considered a violation if they don't, if they're not providing that to renters before May first.
Joe, did you say a date when you thought the information packet material would be available?
I don't have a date yet. I'm shooting for middle of April, or, I'm sorry, middle of March, ideally, just so we can get it out with enough time for people to start getting those out. But like I said, we will not start penalizing someone for not having that until May first.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions on the rental permits? All right. The next item is a request to authorize negotiation and awarding of a contract to Barrier Island Ocean Rescue for the provision of Beach Patrol services. As the mayor stated earlier, we did some, send out an invitation for bids several weeks back for our new Beach Patrol contract. We did receive two, two proposals or two bids. The first one was from Barrier Island Ocean Rescue. That one was received on February eleventh, and it was a responsive bid. We received a second proposal that came from-
I ain't even bothered yet. I forgot, have you meant to me that in your mouth? Why? Oh my God, Angelo. Angelo, Angelo. Here's a can. Ow.
Can we please have someone mute their phone, maybe Ryan Gonzalez? Please mute your phone. Please mute your device.
Okay. Do you all hear me now?
Yes.
All right. The second one that came in came from Safeway Services Group. That one unfortunately was submitted.
I believe someone has taken serious advantage of our time here.
What's going on here? How do we get this stuff off, Joe? Okay.
Whoever you are, it's not very, it's not very entertaining.
Joe, is this someone you can block as host?
Yeah, hang on. All right, everybody still with me?
Yep.
That's true.
That's the risk you take when you open up your Zoom meetings for anyone who would like to participate. Okay, I don't remember exactly where I left off, but-
Safeway, a bid from Safeway, I believe its name is.
Safeway Services Group submitted a bid. They mailed it overnight on the eleventh. Unfortunately, it did not arrive until the sixteenth, so that one, we determined was a non-responsive bid due to it arriving after the deadline. So, the one responsive bid that we have is from Barrier Island Ocean Rescue. I provided copies of their proposal to you by email. Upon review, it appears to meet all of our basic requirements under the invitation for bids. Of course, this is the same company we've used for the last several years. The, really, the only significant item of note is the proposed cost of the bid. It did come in at one hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, which is quite a bit higher than we've had for the last several years. We've been in the one-thirty to one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar range. We did budget in anticipation of us going up for a contract this year. We did budget a small increase, but we have not budgeted an increase of that extent. So, we would, if we were going to fully fund the Beach Patrol contract based on the, essentially the same level of service that we had last year, we would have to find about forty thousand dollars of additional funds in order to do that. So, a couple options that we have, one would be to move forward as it's been submitted and to commit to identifying the preferred funding source, whether that's by budget amendment or shifting some funds around from our existing budget. A second option would be to amend the scope of the contract. So, if we wanted to get it down closer to where we had budgeted, we could go in and negotiate and potentially modify dates, level of service, things like that through negotiation process. We could rebid, given the fact that we only received one responsive proposal. Probably not the best idea, knowing that our Beach Patrol season is scheduled to start April first. And so, I would probably recommend that we move forward with negotiations based on the current proposal, knowing that we would have to identify additional funding for the remainder of that contract. Just as an FYI, we did a few weeks ago receive our fourth quarter, our fourth quarter, their second quarter distribution from the state for the, the last, the September or October through December state accommodations tax revenue. Typically, we get six to ten thousand dollars in that last quarter. This year, we got, and fake and confirm, I think we were somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-five to sixty thousand dollars in that fourth quarter. So, we do have quite a bit more funds available at the end of twenty twenty that we carried over into the ATAX fund balance into twenty twenty-one that really were not anticipated. So, that would be probably the, the best source where we could get most, if not all, of the funding. I'm not really worried about, for this coming year, where the money would come from. I mean, we're sitting on several millions of dollars of fund balance. Finding forty thousand really isn't, isn't that huge of a deal. The only concern I would express is, you know, this is, this has the potential to be up to a five-year contract. So, if we were doing just a one-year non-recurring, you know, going into fund balance, I wouldn't have any concern with that. But if we're looking at, you know, two, three, four, five years down the road, you know, this is something that we would continue to have to find the, the funding to, to continue to meet that contract. So, I just kind of throw that out as an additional topic for discussion. But I, I believe my recommendation would be to move forward with Barrier Island Ocean Rescue. Whether you want to do it as proposed or negotiate some modifications to the contract, I would leave that to council's discretion. But given the timeframe, I, I do feel like we, it would be in our best interest to move forward with, with that vendor.
Thank you, Joe. I, I may have missed some information somewhere along the line, but it appeared to me that what I had in the, by way of a bid was essentially a total number for the contract of, as you say, it's like a hundred and eighty-four thousand plus. There's, what I'm getting at is, I don't really find that we have a breakdown to look at to see whether it makes sense to try to whittle on the, we'll say, the number of days or the hours per day or, or rearrange the number of people serving during different periods under the contract. So, at this point, unless you have some ideas in that vein, I would have nothing to propose to embark on negotiation. In other words, I'm at the point of, without having a more complete breakdown that sets out where the costs come from that are reflected in their total number, it's hard to think about how we might adjust the level of service to try to get closer to what we had budgeted.
Yeah, they, they just submitted it as a, you know, just a lump-sum proposal, which really was all we were asking for, just the base cost amount. I'm sure they do factor in days, hours, number of personnel and equipment that they'll have out on the beach. Typically, what we do, what we do working with them the last several years is, you know, for modifying dates, hours, personnel, we go through and, and essentially do it on like a pro-rata basis. So, if we add some here, we take some away there. We, we basically have a per-hour cost. So, if we needed to increase, you know, for thirty days, adding a second person, we can get basically a per-employee, per-hour cost for that. So, if we were going to try to negotiate it down, we probably would have to get into that level of detail. I would just say, if, if that was the approach we were going to take, then we would be essentially reducing the level of service that we had last year. And of course, last year, we kind of modified the, the calendar and the service levels to correspond to the new leash ordinance on the beach. So, our Beach Patrol season runs for the same period of, of the peak season, which is April first through September thirtieth. And that's what this contract amount is based on, April first through September thirtieth. So, if we were looking to, you know, try to maybe get the cost down a little bit, you know, we would likely be reducing days. And then there are some days where we'll have one, two, or four people on the beach. You know, maybe that's having one for a longer period of time instead of two, or two instead of four. So, I mean, it, it can be done, but really, it would be reducing the level of service that we had last year.
All right, well, I'm not opposed to making some insubstantial, I'll say, reductions in the level of service. The only other thing that I, it seemed to me that we had increased the number of cans that they're going to provide service for, from four to six, if I have that right.
Yeah, and that's, I wouldn't expect that to have anything but a negligible impact. I mean, the, the real cost is them taking their equipment from Kiowa and bringing it out to the beach. You know, if it was serving four instead of six, they still have to bring the equipment, they still have the personnel. I can't imagine there's going to be that much difference going from six back to four. Now, if we said, okay, we did it for a year, but we want to get out of the trash can business, then, you know, that would probably knock several thousand dollars off, off of the amount. But again, that would be a reduction from what we had last year.
Yeah. Well, I'm, you know, my feeling is that unless you can trim multiple thousands by adjusting the level of service without elimination of the service of the trash cans through negotiation, I don't, you know, I, I don't see that we're in a good, I, I don't see a good way forward without adjusting where the money's going to come from. Adjusting where the money's going to come from. Yeah, without compromising the services. I guess the request is to authorize Joe to enter negotiations and to me, a question is. Has to do with this, whether the scope and negotiations would include, I'll say, some minor adjustments to the level of service. Uh, to try to get the cost reduced in some meaningful manner. So let's just hear from the members of council. Skip, what what do you say?
I just, you know, I I'm agreeing with what you're saying. We don't want to uh go in and and try and find a. Uh, a few dollars here and a few dollars there and and end up compromising the service that we were, what we want from these people. So.
All right.
Go ahead and negotiate, but that's, I think there might be some, just as you're saying, limited opportunity.
Yeah. Jerry, have you thought about this?
I I think that we need, I mean, Joe can, you know, talk to him and see if there's any minor negotiations. I don't expect that there would be any big reduction in their bed because. I mean, my guess is that part of this is they have to pay people more to get the trained staff that they need to provide the service. As long as this doesn't prohibit us from. In the future, because I understand it's easy for us to find the money now, but in in coming years, we might not be able to find this extra money. And we may have to talk about scaling back, but at this point, I don't think we can scale back here and there and say, oh. You know, don't have them out on Monday and Tuesday, and then that'll be the day we have an incident on the beach and beach patrol wasn't there. So. I mean, I'm kind of in favor at this point. I think they've done a good job for us. Uh, Pat and I were on uh kind of a roundup of the year with Joe and um. They seem like real professionals and I think this is probably a legitimate bid and I'm kind of in favor of just authorizing Joe to. Work out the details and go forward with it.
All right, Pat.
Um, I feel like this is our major public service that we provide and that we ought to. I don't really want to cut down on the amount of service that we're providing for the people here, so I'm sort of with Jerry and then. I think we ought to just let Joe discuss it with them. Maybe there's some things they can trim. Maybe it has to do with the fact that we're dragging it out to five years. I don't know. Um, but I I think we ought to just. You know, find the money and and if we can in three years renegotiate, I don't know enough about how the contract business works, so. Um, but I do feel that we can't cut back on service, not this summer. I think it's going to be very important this summer.
All right, thank you, Pat. Barry?
Uh, I assume Joe is correct that the the lump sum of one eighty-four to something. Is a unit price that's carried for five consecutive years, that they weren't given an escalation per year? This is the the cost per year?
Uh, in our draft contract, we have language that um if they um want to seek an increase from one year to the next. They have to provide it to us uh so many days in advance, and we would have the ability to either move forward or not move forward with it.
So does that give them the right to request an increase? And then if we don't approve it, the contract is canceled?
Uh, I don't have it right in front of me. I don't remember exactly what it says, but um. Uh, I think it's along the lines of we have the ability to agree or not agree, uh and if we don't agree, I believe it would become canceled. But the initial term we have is a two-year initial with three um one-year renewals. Um, so, you know, we would kind of anticipate that um. After this year and this year, we would be taking it on a year-by-year basis, which is very similar to what we did with the last contract. It was a one-year initial with with two one-year renewals. Um, so this one, the the difference is we're doing two-year initial with three one-year. Renewals for up to five years. Um, a- and I will say, this company, um, for the three years that we've had them. On the most recent contract, um, they did not submit any increases from one year to the next. Obviously, that's not a guarantee. It wouldn't happen in in future years, but um the only time our our contract has been adjusted. Uh, was to accommodate additional services at our request, whether that was additional days, garbage service or whatnot. Um, they they did not uh submit any cost escalation for any of the three years that we had them.
Okay, so this, so just to clarify, so this is a a lump sum per year guaranteed for two years. Starting in the third year, they have a right to ask for escalation, and at which point both parties have a right to either agree or disagree. If there's a disagreement, the contract goes void?
You know, I'm gonna.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say the contract goes void. It's just a question of whether or not you renew. The terms of the contract for another year. So you have two years, that is the initial term. And then the subsequent years, they can, as you say, request uh an increase. If we do not agree to the increase, then there's no renewal. Presumably, I mean, they can withdraw the request to increase.
Okay. Well, I I'm just wondering. If that's the case, maybe the inflated number versus what we anticipated is due to the fact is that they. They see this number as a lump sum for a five-year continual continual period, so they had to put a number in there. That was going to cover themselves for five years. What I'm getting at is if we, I I'm in favor of negotiations, but I would. Verify they understand that the concept of what you just said, which is, this is a lump sum for two years. At which the third year is negotiable, and I'd also suggest that they at least give us, since this is basically a labor contract. I mean, there's some equipment, but it's a labor contract. They give us unit rate per labor, so that you have some ability to then. Either make adjustments up or down, if you see fit, depending on our needs and our budget.
Yeah, my understanding from Joe's comments is that that information, they they have been forthcoming with that information for prior years. Or or that that he he would understand that they would provide that information.
Yeah, but I I'd put it in the contract that, you know, it's it's a lump sum contract, but any adjustments made would be made at the unit rates and then put the unit rates in the contract. So that there's no question of if if we ask for more time or we ask for less time, this is the adjustment.
All right, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, that's similar to how we've done it, but we've typically just done it as a um, kind of like a a catch-all, like. Basically, just taking the total contract price divided by total number of hours, beach patrols out on the beach, uh total man-hours. Um, and we basically come up like with an hourly cost, so in the event we ever had to change something, add hours, remove hours, whatnot. Uh, we just did it at a a fixed hourly cost uh based on the previous contract term amount.
So if you wanted to include that in some fashion, can you do that by? I'll say a side letter that is essentially, you've negotiated the terms of the agreement. And you can make that uh reflect that as the understanding of what the costs on an hourly. Basis are in a side letter?
Yeah, we, I'm looking at the draft um contract document and the scope of services and. We do have um. The during the initial two years or any extension, the town may request additional services. Uh, the contractor would use reasonable estimate, reasonable efforts to accommodate the request. At a cost approximately proportional to the contract price, so that's when we're uh adding additional services. The, really, the first two years were locked in. What happens on the third year, we have in the contract language, it says. Town reserves the right to renew the initial contract for up to three additional one-year periods, if it determines renewal to be in the best interest. Uh, any request for a price increase must be made in writing at least ninety days prior to the anniversary date of the contract. Or sooner, if so requested by the town. Any request will be evaluated prior to exercising the option to renew. The town will be the sole judge as to whether any price increase will be approved. If the town exercises its right of renewal, any changes to the dates of coverage, hours of operation and contract price. Will be agreed in writing and made part of the contract. So basically, what we're, what we're going to have is we're locked in for two years. At this rate, um, if there's going to be any increase beyond that, starting in year three. They have to give us at least ninety days notice. We would review that, go through it, see if we have the ability to absorb it. We can negotiate if needed. Um, but the town has the sole option to decide whether or not uh to move forward with renewal or not.
Well, what you just read then forces them to put a price in here to cover five years. Because if we choose to proceed, they don't have a right to, a- and we choose not to give them an increase. They are obligated to do the contract at that unit rate for the next five years, so maybe that is a reason why the price is so high. That may be something you want to clarify with them.
Well, it doesn't obligate them to provide services at a fixed price for five years in any case.
Joe, Joe read that we have the sole obligation. They don't, they don't have the right to, they can request it, but it didn't say they had any right to.
They, that's correct. They can request an increase, but we do not have to agree to the renewal. For the next year with an increased price. So all that means is, if you haven't renewed it. Then you don't have a contract for that next year.
You you may want to clarify that with them, that that may be something that that they saw it as if they were put a price in and we choose not to give them an increase. They may feel like they're still obligated to perform under the contract.
Well, I think Joe can uh make sure they they have the correct understanding of what this does. In the course of his negotiations.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the the previous contract we had was a one-year with two one-year renewals for a total term of three years. Uh, they did not submit any price increase for year two and year three. I mean, it could potentially be their intent of having this be a five-year number. Where they would not um submit any increase from year to year. Uh, I couldn't speak to what their strategy. Uh, would be for the the pricing or if they anticipate they may uh come in in future years with a um. Uh, with a higher rate, but um, I mean, all I could say for certain is that this amount would be locked in for two years. If they want to go up in future years, they would have to give us advanced notice, and we would have the ability to either renew. Uh, at that new rate uh or not renew the contract.
Jerry, you satisfied? You know what you're doing to go forward?
Well, let me just ask, are you wanting to see and vote on a final contract? Or are you granting the authority to move forward and authorize the signing? At a not to exceed the amount of the bid?
My understanding of comments of council was that they are accepting. The bid price for the for the two years of a hundred and eighty-four thousand plus. And that you are, would then be authorized to enter into that agreement. Now, if you are, if you have any success in negotiation to. Come to a different understanding that results in a different price, then we'd want to see what that is.
Okay. Any, any change in price or like within a certain amount? And I I I only bring it up.
Say, the, it's the up to, you're you you're working on an up to, that was the bid price.
Right. So if it, you know, if we make a couple little tweaks and it goes down five or ten thousand, are you wanting to see that? Again, if there's changes to the level of service or the term or something.
Want to know what what the changes to the level of service are. I would want to know that.
But my, my position, Joe, is that I really don't want the level of service to change. That would produce that dramatic of a reduction in the bid. I'm comfortable with you just working out the details as Barry kind of pointed out, make sure everybody has an understanding of that. Three, four, and five-year renewal, and then I'm comfortable with you negotiating that everybody's. On the same page as far as terms and then going with it.
Yeah, because if if we have to bring it back, I'm going to recommend that we have a special call meeting um in March, because if we wait till the. End of March, we're only going to be like a week out from the start of um uh beach patrol season, so. You know, if it's something that you want to see again, we need to get that turned around as quick as we can, but if if you're okay. You know, if we can maybe do a little tweak here and there, we will, um, as long as it's not. Significantly impacting the service level. Um, but if, you know, if if you want to see something, any changes. Before it's approved, then um we'll have to expedite it and have a special call meeting.
No, I think that, I think what members of council have expressed is they're, they do not want to see a change in the level of service. So.
Okay.
You're, you can go with what you have, as long as we don't have a change in the level of service, it doesn't have to come back to council. If there's some misunderstanding on their part about the impact of the. Offer from the town for a five-year arrangement, well, two years plus three renewal years, then. If that changes what they bid, fine. I don't think they misunderstand it.
Yeah, I I would assume not either, but um we can double check just to make sure.
All right. Anything further on that?
Uh, I guess I just need a vote of some sort to give the go-ahead.
All in favor of having Joe go forward with negotiation and finalization of the. Agreement with uh Barrier Island Ocean Rescue for the beach patrol services. Under the proposed five-year arrangement, please signify your approval by saying aye. I think that was unanimous, Joe.
Do you know who motioned and seconded? I didn't tell the town.
Okay, well, I'll 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 start over then. When we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
The negotiation, et cetera, et cetera. A second.
Second.
All in favor, please signify your approval by saying aye.
I am aye.
All right, thank you.
Uh, the next item is a request to approve an agreement with the Low Country Marine Mammal Network for. Operation of the twenty twenty-one dolphin education program, essentially identical agreement to what we've had the last couple of years. Um, I did hear back from Lauren, um, Russ, that Low Country Marine Mammal Network, uh, they were fine with it. She did, did just note one change. That um, one of the members of the project team, Cheryl Monday, is no longer a member of the project team, so. Uh, we would just recommend approving it with um that minor modification. Um, but cost, level of service, everything uh same as um the last couple of years. Uh, and like I said, there uh, the entity is fine with the contract as submitted.
Very well, the Low Country Marine Mammal Network. Contract for the dolphin education program. May I have a motion to approve? The enter, entry into the agreement as presented.
So moved.
This is our second.
Second.
All in favor of entry into an agreement with the Low Country Marine Mammal Network for operation of the twenty twenty-one dolphin. For operation of the twenty twenty-one Dolphin Education Program as presented, please signify your approval by saying aye.
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 That is approved unanimously.
Um, the next item is really more of a uh discussion item. Um, we're getting into the season where we get a barrage of phone calls and emails. Uh, asking um, from folks, what do they need to do to have a wedding on the beach? And officially, we don't have any policy governing weddings or other events or activities um, on the beach, so. Typically, the information that we provide is um, basically, you just can't have any commercial services. Um, because our ordinance prohibits commercial activities on the beach. Um, so you know, we tell them, okay, you can bring a ten, you can bring chairs, you can bring. Uh, equipment, whatnot, um, it just can't be delivered and set up um, by a commercial vendor. Um, of course, right now, we're saying no groups over ten due to COVID restrictions. Um, but obviously, once the um, uh, state of emergency has, has lapsed, then. Um, that will go away. Um, I've been looking at what some other communities do kind of up and down the coast and. Several do have uh, an actual policy. Um, and some uh require permits to uh have a wedding or event on the beach. Um, that's something, I think it would be very beneficial to just be able to have a document that we can give to somebody. Uh, or post on our website when they want to know, um, you know, what can I do, what can't I do? Um, as it relates to having a wedding or other type of activity um, on the beach, so I, I've put this forward as a. Uh, request to establish a policy. Uh, I don't have a policy or anything to put before you currently, this is really more just to um, uh, initiate the process. Um, I, I think it would be beneficial to have it to um, be able to give more. Um, concrete information to people when they call. Um, instead of just kind of picking some random stuff out of our beach ordinance. And trying it to apply it to a, you know, specific wedding or event. Um, so that would be my recommendation. Um, if council's agreeable, we can either look at some. Um, other communities and put together a draft, if you want to have an ad hoc group to look at it. Uh, we'd certainly um, welcome that as well. Uh, but I, I, I do think there would be benefit of us having some sort of general policy. Uh, governing those types of activities on the beach.
I would say that.
I take it from your comment about setups and so forth.
What other communities are doing?
I'm sorry, too.
The other thing is, I, I believe that there would be some level of sensitivity by some residents. For the town to. Establish a policy that might. I'll say encourage people to start holding events of this type on the beach. So in that regard, it seems to me that we're going to need to be. Um. I'll say forthcoming with involvement of the community.
Yeah, I, I would certainly agree with that and um. Uh, I would say, I don't know that we're necessarily inviting it, just based on the number of requests we get every year. I mean, especially during COVID and people not having to have, you know, indoor celebrations and those type things, you know. People are looking, they're still getting married, they still want to have a, a ceremony, but you know, they want to do it in a way that's um. Safe and for a lot of people, that means going out to the beach and like I said, we, we've been peppered with a lot of these requests. Um, uh, I don't think having a policy would necessarily be inviting more. Um, it's just, you know, information, consistent information that we can hand out. In the event someone does ask what's required to have a wedding on the beach.
Well, as you know, the, the club operates. Facility that's right above the beach where they hold weddings is a regular part of their operation, so. They, 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 they may not appreciate having. Uh, the town facilitate wedding ceremonies on the beach.
And I. I, I'll jump in with just a couple of comments right here because in. You know, monitoring, mon- monitoring the, the social blog next door and whatever, there was recently an inquiry. A, a woman said friends were coming down renting a couple of big houses and they wanted to have uh the wedding on the beach by these rentals. And I was amazed at how inaccurate comments were, the replies in response. Um, referring her to caterers that would go out and do it on the beach and. So I don't know if it's a wedding policy, but maybe we just need an activities on the beach policy because, you know. There's restrictions on vehicles because of the protected environment for the turtles and such. You know, clarifying about grills and fires because does that cover um, baking dishes? Um, so I guess I would be in favor of developing something that you could hand to people and say, no, the catering. The caterer can't be out there driving down the beach with the chairs and the tents and setting up and. I, I think there's something that we could put in there that would really help out, so it's very clear. I mean, people say, oh, you can have a fire on the beach and roast the pig, well. No, you can't have a fire on the beach unless it's above the high water and that's supposed, so I think it would. A good idea to, to have some policy written up about activities and clarifying you can and can't do. Silence.
Skip.
Are you going around, going around the table?
Well, I think you were, you were starting to say something before I.
Yeah.
Walked over you.
I was just trying to make sure that I understood, but uh Joe's uh limitations and I assume that uh. Catering would be out of the question for something like that. So you can't have food brought out. You can't have a caterer or a, a equipment provider come out with chairs and tables, as Joe said. So you're, you're really down to bare bones of people coming out and standing in the sand. Probably not even under an harbor or a canopy of some sort, but they probably could put something on. Having their vows and then leaving the beach and going to a party place. I guess you could party out on the beach if you brought your own. Refreshments. As you would if you were going to spend a day at the beach. Um, and John, your comment about maybe inching in on the club business for weddings. Uh, I thought of the same thing when I was reading over it this morning. And. They might not be all that. Uh. Competitive. If you go with what I was just saying, you know, people just come out on the beach and they have a, a celebrant come out and, and uh. Do the vows and do whatever they want in their ceremony and then they turn around and they leave the beach. That's probably not a business the club wants to get into. The club wants to get into the catering side of it, I'm sure.
I guess that's, I think it would be good to have a policy or something that. You know, town staff can hand out to define what commercial activities are, that that does cover. The caterer showing up with the catering van and delivering food and stuff out on the beach. So I just think maybe if we just had something that defined. Commercial services that that is the chairs and the tents and the caterer and, and define for sure the. I, I just think it wouldn't hurt if there was something we had to hand out and clarify all that.
Yeah, Joe, Jerry, I, 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 you know, if I understood what Joe said. You, you currently, you cannot have any commercial activity on the beach, so. That would seem to me to be a reason to say, well, you can't have the people come out to set up the tent. You can't have them come out and set up the chairs, you can't have them come out. The caterer can't bring food out to the beach because all those things are commercial.
And I, I, I agree, it's just that I don't think people realize that, they don't even, a lot of people don't think to ask. Just posting on something, they were searching for caterers and. You know, like deposits for a wedding in May and how that they get the ball rolling, nobody I think in that group was even thinking to ask the town. They were.
When you're trying to think about what is the policy and, and why, how would you make it different than the policy is? If I understood correctly. As Skip said, if you want to go out, walk out onto the beach and have somebody officiate over a wedding ceremony. I don't think you're really getting crosswise with a prohibition of commercial activity. But most of the rest of these things would, would be crosswise with a prohibition of commercial activity, in which case. If you're going to tolerate them, then you're going to change fundamentally what the town is allowing on the beach.
And I don't want to tolerate them, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that somehow. The information is not out there that you can't do those things. So somehow we have to figure out how to put this policy. People read and understand that you can't cater a wedding on the beach.
Well, I don't know that that takes a policy because I think the policy exists, what it takes is. Delineating what the policy means in respect of, of certain types of events. So if you want to start with saying weddings and then you want to move on from there. You can work on how the policy that exists applies.
Well, maybe it's just a dropdown menu on our town website and maybe a tidelines article.
Yeah, but that doesn't, when I hear the word policy, what I'm thinking about is you're revising the town code.
No, all I'm saying is that we're clarifying or making public what, what town code already is.
You could do that with an FAQ, for example.
Means no caterer out there.
You could do that with an FAQ, Jerry.
Yeah, like a drop down on the, on the website or something, but I think what Joe is saying too, that we just need to. Policies may be the wrong word, we just need to, to take what we have in town code now and put it in an FAQ that people could pull it up and say. Oh, can I have a party on the beach and it says that, you know, no commercial activities means no caterer. So, just that drop.
I would be interested to know if any members of council are of a mind to change the current policy. With the understanding that the current policy would prohibit. The. Coming out to the beach and the setting up of tents and tables and chairs and. Catering services on the beach and so forth. Is there anyone of a mind to change the policy as it is? Anyone? I hear nothing, I, it doesn't sound like people want to change policy.
There, there's one, there's one I think may be worthy of changing regarding the commercial activities. Um. And this is sometimes weddings, but it's sometimes just families and whatnot is photography, which is technically a business activity. Um, there's photographers on the beach all summer long. Technically, that's a violation of our ordinance. And when we tell folks, you know, no commercial activities. Usually, one of their first questions is, well, what about a photographer? And even though technically, under the ordinance, a photographer is not allowed to operate on the beach. We just kind of. Turn a blind eye to that for lack of a better answer. Um, because we know almost every wedding is going to want to have some pictures. Um, we have families out there, you know, doing, you know, family photos and whatnot out on the beach. Um. Like I said, right now, technically, the ordinance would prohibit that. Um, that's something we may want to revisit.
Yeah.
Policy might be the, the word we're getting hung up on a little bit, I, I look at it more as a, a publication of. Like a flyer, like the flyer we give out for what the leash law means, we're not. Making policy with the leash law, we're just explaining it in possibly a better way or give people an alternative explanation as to. What they can and can't do under the existing ordinance. So in that respect, I would support Jerry's idea of the FAQ. Now, the photographer.
Go, going back.
That does get into a policy issue eventually.
I mean, going back to commercial activities on the beach, I know during. COVID, like when the lake house was shut down, I think like some of the yoga instructors, some of the different activities were. Taking place out on the beach and I would assume people are paying for those classes. And if that's the case, that too would technically be a violation of our ordinance. So it's, it's not just weddings and wedding activities, it, it is other stuff too.
The yoga thing, I think I can, I can explain a little bit because that's money being paid and a venue was changed. I mean, normally you would expect to have that happen at the lake house, uh, the way it's done. But they said, no, we can't do it in the lake house, let's move it out to the beach, it wasn't done because the beach was there. The photography? I don't know.
I mean, we, there needs to be some flexibility, we can't get so restrictive that we're telling residents in, in, you know. Even visitors that all the do's and don'ts out there, I think there needs to be some flexibility, but just certainly clarify. I, I don't think most people want us to turn this into, again, the catering trucks driving down the beach with chairs and tents and food, but. You know, the photography is pretty non-disruptive, so I don't know, is there a way to, to, you know, define that difference? Or do we just allow the photography? As long as it's come and go, we don't want somebody like set up out there saying, oh, come get your picture taken every afternoon from four to six, but.
Well, in a way, we have to. If, if, if we start thinking about limiting photography for things like wedding events or special events. What do we do with someone that wants to go out on the beach, my neighbor wants to go out on the beach and take, take a picture of sunrise? Not associated with anything other than just wanting to take a picture.
That wouldn't be so, you know, the company offering it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was why I phrased it as a, a request to establish a policy. Um, because I, I, I think while some of it could be, you know, clarifying and interpreting what we have on the books. I think looking at it from a policy standpoint, there may be some items we may want to go back and, and revisit and see if they. You know, accurately reflect kind of what is or may take place on the beach.
All right, Joe, I, you know, before you charge off uh, writing a new policy, how about if we try to identify. Where the concerns are with the existing policy from your experience, so then we have something to. Let's, let's start small and work our way up.
Do you want all of council to work on that, do you want me to work on that?
I like you to, I mean, I, I would like you to, you're the one who sees the requests and you're the one who's bringing it to our attention. That you're aware of things that take place on the beach, that you would consider to be in violation of the existing. Code, so. I think it would be helpful if you would. Help, if, if you would delineate what the bounds of the concern are.
All right, I can do that.
Hey Barry, you're quiet, you're probably on the beach more than anybody because you're there every morning, aren't you?
Yeah.
So, but you, you're probably not there when these activities would be going on.
What if you took a dog walker out on the beach? Is that a commercial activity?
Is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I haven't seen a problem with commercial activity, I understand what Joe's getting at, and so, I mean, I think at this point. The policy's, the, the ordinance is reasonable, no commercial activity, I think it's more now of trying to define. what we consider commercial activity. You know, like a photographer or, you know, you're paying, you're paying someone to do a wedding on the beach with 10 people. Is that considered commercial activity? I don't think we want to start regulating that. But if you're paying somebody, then that technically is commercial activity.
Well, I like the mayor's idea of starting small, doing some research and figuring out what we're actually talking about and then going from there before we make any big, bold decisions.
It hasn't been a problem. I don't think it's been a problem to date. So I don't think there's any rush to make some major changes.
The only thing is, I saw that post next door about the planning for this wedding out there. And I'm like, whoa, somebody needs to ask some questions of the town before you start putting deposits down on caterers.
Yeah, the last thing we want to do is have Beach Patrol or Code Enforcement roll up and start issuing citations when somebody's having what's supposed to be the best day of their life.
All right, Joe, do you know where you're going?
Yeah, we'll start putting some information together.
All right, very good. Anything for you?
Yeah, two, two other items. One is just an update. I've sent you a copy of an announcement today from the PGA that today they had announced that they were going to be limiting the capacity for the 2021 PGA Championship in May to 10,000 spectators, which is somewhere between a quarter and a third, I think, of what they would typically have at that event. Just as a follow up, the Planning Commission did approve a temporary encroachment permit across from the entrance to the marina. That was approved on February 10th. So as far as we know right now, that still is planning to move forward. Now, when they did the traffic studies and everything, that was based on the assumption that it would be full attendance. We now know that's not going to be the case. So I would expect that the traffic, while there's still going to be more folks than we would see out here in a typical day, it's not going to be the, you know, three or four times what we would have expected had it been at full capacity. So I'm sure there'll be more information coming out for that. But I did just want to make sure everyone saw that, including folks who may have been considering renting and and all the businesses out here who I think were, you know, hoping to see all those folks come into town because obviously that's a huge economic impact for the community. So on one hand, you know, you're you're sorry to hear that that they're not going to have what they had anticipated in terms of people coming into town. But at the same time, just from a public safety standpoint, you would also be concerned about having that many people coming into town during a global pandemic. So that's what I forwarded today is all we know right now. But I'm sure we'll be getting some additional information as we go forward. One other item, it's not on the agenda. If you can just bear with me for one second. Fay, are you on the line?
Yes.
Okay, hang on one second. Put your mask on, I'm coming in.
This boy with what you were asking me was, oh.
So I wanted to take a minute just to recognize Fay. I think, was it February 1st? February 1st was Fay's 25th anniversary working for the Towne Seabrook Island. I think I can speak for everyone when I say, I don't know what the heck we would do without you. But we want to.
I'm sure y'all would fumble through.
You keep us on track with everything. But we wanted to give you a small token of our appreciation for 25 years of service to the town. So we have a couple of things for you.
Answer, yeah.
But I knew if I put it on the agenda, Fay would probably say, well, what is employee recognition? It's for you. We wanted to thank you for everything that you do for us, not only over the last day and every day for as long as you're.
Thank y'all very much.
We have one more thing coming too.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I've been, I've enjoyed every year.
What, Jerry? I said, thank you and congratulations.
What did you say? Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Normally, we would all give you a standing ovation, but.
Thank y'all very much. 25 years makes us, we seem old.
Hey, they didn't have child labor laws back when we hired you to start your 25 years. So you must have started very, very young.
And that that concludes my.
This was quite a surprise.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, do we have any any further comments from members of council? There is nothing. No one's waving. No one's speaking. Next, I'll call on Annie Smith Jones, who's proven once again that she's patient. Utility Commission.
I don't know that I want to follow that, that little demonstration, but I'll give it a shot. So we have our meeting on February 17th. We started by welcoming Mr. Jim Furland as the newest Seabrook Island Utility Commissioner. We did review of, finished our review of December and last fiscal year. The bottom line of December was is that we showed a net deficit of $16,644. But the year to date had showed a net income of $297,911. And after we adjusted for our capital charges and our debt services, principal and interest, we ended the year with a surplus of $16,065. Then we went into January. January, we had a net income of $61,917 after adjusting for our capital expenditures of over $60,000 and our principal and interest. The month ended with a surplus of $3,988. Our available cash as of December, excuse me, January 31st, 2021 We also discussed under our financial section, the St. John's Fire Department has accrued a bill of over $55,000 with us over the past three years. And we discussed, there was some discussion as to what, what could be done about that. We've, we've tried to collect for some time. They're just refusing to pay. That was primarily what's called the fire hydrant fee. St. John's, we're not the only municipality that they've refused to pay. Kiowa is in the exact same position as as we are. I think Kiowa just recently decided to write the whole thing off. We're in a slightly different situation because of our bonds and and really not being able to give free service. And that would be considered free service if we just did away with that. So it continues to be an ongoing saga, but it was a discussion under our financial discussion this particular month. We have our audit scheduled to begin the week of March 22nd. On our operations side for the sewer, we had a daily flow of .35 million gallons per day with our maximum a day .47 million gallons. We, on the water distribution, we did over 20.1 million gallons for the month versus 14.5 million from last year. We also discussed our FEMA generator project and the holding pond expansion project. We continue to march forward on that holding pond expansion project. I believe I told you last month that we were approved for that project up to $3.5 million. It looks as though, I'm not quite sure, obviously, right now, we don't know what the cost is going to be. But it looks as though we will be taking, looking to be, asking for an approval of a $3 million bond. If you remember, for us to incur debt, that is one of the areas, one of only two areas that the town council would need, or the town mayor, I should say, would need to approve. I did ask our, Stephen Brown, our joint attorney in regard to that. And my understanding is, is just that the mayor would have to approve, approve that when we, when we get there. We are by no means there yet, but we are in that process of plans of being developed and so forth. And we will put that eventually when it's appropriate time out to bid for the actual expansion pond project. Basically, all we're doing is we're lifting the sides about five feet up on our expansion project, pond. That's it in a nutshell. And we've gotten DEHEC to approve doing that without the, without bringing it fully up to code, which would require us to line the pond. We are, turned out we're an unlined pond, which was appropriate for the time. And they've agreed that we do not need to bring it up to standard, primarily due to us being able to indicate to them or have proven over the years that we have never had an issue with that holding pond. And that we've continued to monitor for monitoring wells outside that pond so that the groundwater is showing to be acceptable standards. So they've utilized basically that information and said that they feel as though we do not need to line our pond, which that would have been easily another half million dollars or more increase for that particular project. We had a discussion also in regard to a recent cyber attack of a Florida utility company. Apparently, they, somebody got in and attacked their SCADA system and they were able to make all kinds of changes and do all kinds of things. We had a discussion of that basically because we needed to ensure that the likelihood of that being able, someone hacking our system. The bottom line is, the sewer setup much different than the way this particular utility was set up. They had given, used a common password. Multiple people within their system had that password and easily sort of pass around and so forth. We are not in that particular situation. We have only one person that has that ability with that password. We also, anytime anything happens with our system, Tommy West, who had our password, he gets immediate notifications. And, you know, if someone's trying to hack in, he would get an immediate notification that that was going on. So we were relatively comfortable, plus Tommy had been working with the the program, the company that holds our SCADA system. And basically, we were comfortable that they were really on top of that and that the likelihood that that would become was fairly slim. We also reported that Tommy and I had participated in the townwide emergency preparedness meeting that simulated the earthquake scenario. Let's, what else did we have? I think. Hi, Mary. Our next meeting is March 17th. We did review or start to take a look at updating our five-year growth plan for our review. And that will, we'll start to do that again, update it and start to like, look at that again, probably next month. So forth. Any questions?
Any questions? Annie, I don't hear any questions.
Very good.
You had, I believe, indicated previously you were working on getting SC DEHEC's approval for the proposed expansion of the holding pond. And then today you're saying that they have made a determination that you're, I think one of the things you pointed out was, from your ground, from your test wells, the surrounding groundwater is of acceptable quality.
Correct. And because of the groundwater being of the acceptable quality and because over the years, we have never had a violation of our permit, that they were very comfortable in granting us an exception to not having to bring the current holding pond up to the current standards, i.e. we will not have to line our pond.
Congratulations.
Why, thank you. It just saved us about a million dollars.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Annie. Okay, so we have no petitions received, no ordinances for second reading, no ordinances for first reading. So we're now to the miscellaneous business. We have two temporary use permits from the marina, temporary use permit for Bo Hicket Dolphin Slam Tournament to be held April 24th, 2021. And a temporary use permit for the Bo Hicket Invitational Billfish Tournament for the dates May 5 through 8 of 2021. I believe members have been provided copies of the requests for the temporary use permits. And at this point, I will ask that Joe proceed with leading us through the temporary use permits.
Thank you. After our Ways and Means Committee meeting, I've reached out to the staff at Bo Hicket Marina asking them to participate in today's Zoom meeting. And I did get a message about an hour ago from Bo Anderson apologizing that he was not able to attend the meeting today, stated with the close of the marina being so near. They've had a lot of last minute tasks that they've been working on before the sale. They would like a chance to present the plans for the tournament, would be happy to do so by email appropriate and answer any questions. I have not responded to him yet, but obviously council can't vote by email. So my assumption would be that we would go ahead and defer consideration of this request until your next meeting and give them another opportunity to participate. If they're not able to participate in that one, we can certainly take any specific questions. And there were already some that I'd sent to them for which I didn't receive an answer. But if they're not able to participate, we can still submit questions and get responses. But you would have to vote in open session on whether or not to approve or not approve the request. So I would recommend that we defer consideration of both items, both temporary use permit requests until your next meeting.
It's agreeable to me, Joe, but I I wonder whether that leaves them too short on the calendar. Our our March meeting will be late in March and their first event is essentially just beyond the third week of April.
Yeah, it would be March 23rd is our next meeting. And their meeting or their Dolphin Slam is April 24th, so it would be a month and a day.
Yeah. As I said, it's agreeable to me. I just wonder if that's going to work for them to put it off until our March meeting. You wouldn't know.
Yeah, I mean, your your other alternatives would be to vote on it without having the information that you had requested during the Ways and Means Committee meeting or to commit to holding a special call meeting before March 23.
Well,
And just to
hear from council, whether any members of council have any questions from the applications for temporary uses that they have before them.
And and before you do that, just as a reminder of the the items that I've sent to them requesting clarification was the first one, the COVID protocols only listed the Billfish Tournament. We had asked if it, if the same protocols would apply to both events. The second one was, the protocol stated that masks must be worn during all interactions between staff and participants. I've provided information from our emergency ordinance stating that when there is an approved gathering or temporary use, that all employees, customers, patrons, suppliers, vendors, visitors, et cetera, at the gathering shall wear a face covering as a condition of entry or participation. And that all attendee, all capital letter attendees and participants must wear a mask at all times unless it's an activity like eating, drinking, and not just during interactions. So we wanted to make sure that was clarified. And the last one was the protocol stated that gathering on docks will be addressed addressed when seen. And the questions I submitted by whom and what about areas around the vendor booths off off of the docks? So those were the the three questions slash comments that we submitted and had not received answers to. We were hoping to get those today.
All right. Thank you, Joe. So I'll just poll the members. Skip, do you have any other questions for the Marina concerning their applications for temporary use permits?
Not other than why they haven't addressed the questions we put to them yet.
All right, you have no other questions?
None.
All right, thank you. Jerry, do you have any other questions?
I mean, I have concerns. I don't know if I have specific questions. I'd like to see more of the COVID safety protocols. Like, I'm looking at it now like there's going to be an open bar. You think they're going to have people wait six feet apart in line? I just I'm reading through this. They have only given a partway safety protocol. So I'd like to hear more from them.
I missed what you just said, Jerry, about what you would like.
Oh, that I would prefer to defer the consideration from them, maybe in our Ways and Means meeting.
I'm not, yes, I'm not disagreeing that we'll defer, but if if we have questions already in mind, refer to them. I would like to get those questions for Joe to send on to them.
I mean, I can write mine down about the open bar and stuff and and I'll work carefully what they did send us.
All right, pass those on to Joe so he can consolidate questions from council based on what we have to consider at this point.
Okay.
Jer, Pat?
My question would be, how many people are they expecting at each event, individual, you know, how many people are they expecting? I think if it's over 250, that they need to get the South Carolina Department of Commerce to approve this. So I I'd like to know those. I I think the more, much more complete overview of what they're doing for COVID would be appropriate. The race that we had last fall, I think, did a good job of explaining what they were going to do and not really seeing that here. So, Joe, if maybe you could share what those folks sent us, then they could maybe mirror it. I'm with Jerry on the open bar and the vendors. I don't I just think those are places that people are going to amass around. So I don't don't necessarily see why we have to do a full-blown event like this. So that would be my my thought. And I was hoping to see them and maybe with our Ways and Means, we have a special meeting before or after. If they need to get approval in two weeks, we could do it that way.
Yeah, that's a good point. We can, we can take up business at a Ways and Means meeting, which would give them two additional weeks compared to the March 23rd date. Jerry?
Nothing else at this time.
All right. Joe, did you get all the questions from members?
I did. And if there's any more that you think of after the meeting today, you can shoot those to me by email and I'll pass them along. We're kind of getting into the season where we're starting to see events and activities pick up. I know our our current emergency ordinance will expire before the Billfish Tournament. So right now, I'm kind of operating on the assumption that we'll continue to be under the same or similar restrictions come come the time when those two events begin. But we are kind of starting to see some more stuff coming in. So I would assume that this will not be the last request you see in the next few months.
Joe, I'm jumping back in real quick. We keep saying the sale of of the Marina is pending. Is it pending that it's going to close any day? Or is it still long-term negotiations? And I ask that because if we approved it and the sale went through, do the people buying the Marina, are they, would they have to follow the same protocols we're approving in the temporary use permit? I mean, who would be responsible at that point?
Yeah, you'd be approving a temporary use permit with conditions. So it would be a zoning approval, which would tie to the property. So they would be bound by all the same benefits and requirements. You know, I don't, at this point, I don't know what their plans are as far as changing, doing anything like that with any of these events or activities. If there are any changes, it would have to come back unless they were just outright canceled. But I I haven't heard anything in that regard. I I know the closing was scheduled for a couple of weeks ago. It was pushed back. Couple other pieces of information that we had provided. I I believe it's fairly imminent, but I haven't heard an exact date.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Joe will defer, as you had recommended, and we will not vote for approval of the applications for temporary use permits from the Marina for these two events. Right?
Right.
Very good. So have we received any further citizens' comments?
We have one that came in through the website. Let me find one. Came in from Sue Parkins Cameron, 322 Beach Club Villa. The question submitted was, there are scattered chunks from the dock that got hung up on the rocks in dune, visible from the beach. Is there a plan to remove them? I'm aware that the crumbled styrofoam cannot be vacuumed. Thank you. This was, I presume, a part of the dock that washed up a few months ago. We were able to get some of the pieces of styrofoam off. We had tried to get a vac truck to try to get some of the smaller pieces. Unfortunately, there was not one available at the time that we needed it. So we did have our code enforcement staff go out and get as much as they could. We had, I think, I want to say Linda had asked Tom to go out, may have been Fay, somebody had asked him to go out and see if there were still pieces out there. And I don't know that I ever got a report back from him. So I'll I'll follow up with Tom. I think he was the one who went out there. One of the issues we run into is, you know, when it was something that was accessible, if they could get it, they just pulled it. For stuff that may be further up the rocks, it's really not readily or easily accessible. And then we get into issues of when it's above the high watermark, who's actually responsible for it? So I'll I'll follow up with Tom and see what's still out there and if we're able to to help with that. But, you know, we'll we'll get as much as we can, obviously.
So is this an opportunity for enlisting volunteers from one of the community organizations to help pick up debris off the beach?
Well, I know there were a lot of residents who, right after the that dock had washed up, were actually out there helping clean up a lot of that debris without being asked or anything. They just went the bags and and started helping out, which of course we appreciate. But my hunch is if something's on there currently, it's it's something that's probably going to be difficult to get to. But like I said, I'll I'll check with Tom. I I certainly wouldn't be encouraging a volunteer or someone to go up in the rocks if it's, you know, not a safe situation. But we'll we'll get eyes on it and and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I think it's a good idea to have staff go out, maybe take pictures and report back to you what he finds, and then you can go from there. All right. So that was the only comment?
Yeah, the only one that came in through the website. And unless Fay's received any others by email, I'm I'm not aware of any.
I don't have any.
All right, thank you. So that's the end of the agenda, except for one last item. May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor of adjourning the meeting of the Town Council for February 2021, please signify your approval to adjourn by saying aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thanks again, Fay.
Congratulations, Fay.
Bye-bye, everybody. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.